Good evening and welcome to this virtual forum featuring candidates for Asbury Park Board of Education. This forum has been organized by the League of Women Voters of Monmouth County and is sponsored by the statewide education organizing committee. I am Evelyn C. Murphy, President of the Monmouth County League. My pronouns are she and her. I live in Neptune. The League of Women Voters is a 104-year-old nonprofit, nonpartisan political organizations. This means that we never support or oppose individual candidates or political parties. Membership in the league is open to everyone aged 16 or older of any gender who supports our mission to empower voters and defend democracy. Our Monmouth County chapter is the largest in New Jersey with 373 members. We invite all of you to join us. Membership provides opportunities to be involved in unique activities supporting the political process. Things like organizing or moderating a candidate's forum, or registering voters at local festivals, or attending county municipal or school board meetings wearing an observer button, letting the officials know that the league is watching. If any of this sounds interesting to you and you would like to join our league, please log on to our website and become a member. Turning now to tonight's forum, a recording will be available for viewing on our website, lwbmonmouth.org, and on vote411.org, the league's national nonpartisan voter guide. The candidates have agreed that no other recording of the event for any purpose is permitted. Use of screenshots or portions of the official recording is not allowed. So here is Liz Smith with a welcome from our sponsor. Liz?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Liz Smith, as Evelyn. And Evelyn, thank you for the introduction. I am the Director of the Statewide Education Organizing Committee and the sponsor for this evening's forum. We at SEOC are pleased to partner with the League of Women Voters again as the sponsor for this evening's Asbury Park School Board Candidates Forum. SEOC's mission is to inform, educate, and organize parents and community members about education issues and any of their concerns. To all the candidates, thank you for choosing to run for the Board of Education and for participating in the forum this evening. Good luck to you. Now, it is my honor to introduce the trained and experienced moderator for tonight's forum, Cindy Curtis-Butka. As required by league rules, the moderator lives outside of the voting area. Here is Cindy to introduce the forum and the candidates.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Good evening and thank you for your interest in learning about the candidates for the Asbury Park Board of Education. This evening, we will introduce you to all of the six candidates who are running for the three open seats on the Board of Education. We welcome the candidates Stephanie Ackerman, Dominic La Toraca, Jessie Ricks, Shadab Magsud, Danielle Braskam, and Mariela Soria Flores. The candidates have agreed to the following forum. Each candidate will share a 90-second opening statement. Note that we have a timekeeper on screen who will give candidates a 30-second warning and who will indicate when the candidate's time has finished. Candidates will finish their sentences and then stop when the red sign appears. Questions have been submitted by registrants in advance, and these have been screened for relevance and redundancy. We will cover as many questions as we are able. I will invite all candidates to respond to each question, speaking for up to one minute. Finally, each candidate will offer a one-minute closing statement. The order in which the candidates will offer their opening and closing statements, as well as the order of response to each question, has been chosen randomly in advance of the forum. Let's begin. Our first opening statement will be given by Ms. Braskam.
Good evening. First, I want to start off by saying thank you to the League of Women Voters, the voters, the viewers, my fellow candidates, in having us participate in this forum. It's a great way for us to express our views, and we're all here for the same purpose, helping the children of Asbury Park School District. A little bit about me, I am 33 years old. I'm a tutor. And I have an extensive background in community service. I partner with Asbury Park Little League and various organizations in the community. I'm well versed in the needs of the children and what's going on in our city. I have personally been affected by the chaos of Asbury Park School District. And I have a personal investment in this election in that my child attends the middle school here. So we can't afford to go back to what we had before. We need to do something different. And my teammates and I are looking forward to making a difference in this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Braskam. Our next speaker will be Ms. Ricks.
Hi there. I'm Jessie Ricks. I'm one of the improved Learning Now ticket. I have been an active member in Asbury Park for the last 56 years, where I have served on numerous committees. I did work for the Asbury Park School District for 23 years in the capacity of parent liaison, and then as coordinator of the parent liaison, and also as a chunt officer. I've always given my very best to Asbury Park. I advocate for community involvement. I advocate for parents, and of course, the education of our kids. I think our children deserve much more and better than what they have been getting. I believe that if you raise the bar, our children will rise to that bar. Right now, the bar is very low, and I have consistently advocated for raising the bar so our kids can receive a comprehensive education right here in Asbury Park.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Ms. Ackerman.
Good evening, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum, and thank you to all of my fellow Asbury residents, as well as my fellow candidates for attending and participating. My name's Stephanie Ackerman, and I'm running for Asbury Park School Board with Dominic La Toraca and Jessie Ricks. I'm running because I believe the Asbury Park School District can and must be improved now. I've lived in Asbury for more than three years, and in that time, I've come to call it home. I'm a former nonprofit manager, where I managed all aspects of a Board of Directors, and worked with community and grassroots organizations dedicated to improving communities like Asbury Park all around the world. I'm now a licensed attorney, where I focus on financial services litigation, including the recovery of billions of dollars lost by victims of the largest Ponzi scheme in history. I believe my skills and my background make me uniquely qualified to serve as an Asbury Park School Board Member at this crucial time when fiscal responsibility, professionalism, and governance are needed more than ever. In addition to my skills, our ticket brings with us Dominic's higher education management experience, Jessie's experience at virtually all levels of the Asbury Park School system, and an actual plan and vision for improvement of the district. Our plan starts with improved transparency in board activities, community engagement with parents, students, and taxpayers, improved fiscal responsibility and accountability at all levels. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next, we will hear from Dr. Magsud.
Hi, my name is Dr. Shadab Magsud. I lived in Asbury Park full-time since 2012 and was appointed to the Board this year. I'm running as a mom with a child who attends Asbury Park Public School, just like my running mate Danielle Braskam. Our ticket represents fresh new leadership with three minority women who support the recent changes, beginning the process to sell empty buildings and new literacy program that is finally going to be based on science of reading, that will provide milestones and benchmarks to evaluate progress, and moving the central office out of the expensive lease and into an existing school. We cut over $1 million in administrative positions. This is only in the past few months of cleaning up the mess of past administrations and board, including those led by my opponents, the previous and current board members. We are running because we cannot go back to the well-intended, yet bad decision that led us to high tax, poor test result, and bloated administration. I look forward to speaking with more throughout this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we hear from Ms. Soria Flores.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you again for this forum. Thank you for the participants. Thank you for all the ones watching as well. So my name is Mariela Soria Flores, and I am currently, I'm a current Asbury Park resident. I've been living here for approximately 40 years. I migrated here from Peru in 1981, and Asbury Park has been my home pretty much ever since. I have a background in health education. I've worked in the nonprofit world for approximately 16 years, running different programs, being part of different programs that included health education to pregnant women, postpartum women, parenting groups, running parenting groups, as well as child adolescent programs. I feel that our ticket support Asbury's children's is essential for the move forward, all the positive things that have happened and will continue to happen with the support of administration, teachers, students, and families. And that's where my role fits in, as well as my running mates. We are, how you say, grounded in to those levels of being able to be that change and be that advocacy for parents and families, and especially those with no voice. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final opening statement will be from Mr. La Toraca.
Well, thank you all. I'm Dominic La Toraca. I'm honored to be running with Jessie Ricks and Stephanie Ackerman. I'll say a little bit about what I've done in these 90 seconds, who I am. Resident in Asbury Park since 2008, I have over 30 years of experience in education as a community college administrator and as a teacher. I've managed large budgets, and I've supervised hundreds in terms of faculty and staff. I previously served on the Asbury Park School Board from 2016 to 2022, serving as Chair of the Finance Committee in my second term. I guess what some would call a mess, I cut over $20 million with the help of the eight other board members, closer to $25 million. And as a board, we scored an effective rate by the state of over 90%. While doing that, we were incrementally increasing student test scores, which have recently dropped back to the bottom. I also own and operate a small business in Asbury Park with my wife. We sold it a few years back. We hired Asbury Park High School students, and as a result of that, we started a scholarship program that's now in our seventh year of offering college scholarships to recent Asbury Park High School graduates. I've served on other local boards, Trinity Church in Asbury Park, Asbury Park Homeowners Association, the Monmouth Chamber of Commerce. And that's all I'm going to tell you.
Thank you. For our first question, we turn first to Ms. Soria Flores. Please tell us how you define your role as a board member.
I would define my role as being someone who would advocate, advocate for families, being that Spanish is my first language. I would help to have this communication with the families, being able to bring them the great stuff that now is happening in Asbury Park School District, with the hopes in order to be able to retain our families and actually try to bring in new families or returning families to our school district, so that in order, so that we may have a well-rounded school body. I also would make myself held accountable for my decisions and my actions and making sure that I continue to serve with the same enthusiasm, you know, the first year, second year, or whatever amount of years that will be part of the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Magsud?
Yes. As a current Board of Ed member, I am accountable to be responsible for a lot of things that is happening in our board. And having a child in a system, it assures everyone how much more accountable I am by investing my child's education in this system. There are a lot of issues to cover, but my main reason that I came to this Board of Ed meeting was the curriculum and the disaster that is happening to our children and with their low score. So let's understand why the district receives low test score every year. We need to identify the problems before finding the solution. And me and the majority voters, majority board members have identified this issue, and we have a solution for it. And we can't wait to start implementing with our new acting superintendent. And we have already actually started implementing and bringing new literacy programs to the district.
Thank you. Mr. La Toraca?
Well, as a board member, overall, the job is to supervise the superintendent and to make broad policy. In doing so, and in getting any of these other things accomplished, I believe the critical role, what I learned in my six years, is to develop relationships with the other eight members of the board so that you have a 95% effectively running board system. If you leave board members out, if you isolate them, if you talk about a limited group making decisions, you are setting up distrust and inefficiency. In addition, for Asbury, you also have to develop a relationship with the state monitor who can overturn many of those decisions. So you've got to be working hand in hand, developing excellent interpersonal skills in order to anyway be effective about all the great things people are talking about tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Ricks?
Yes. Board members are the governing body. We set the policy, make sure the policies are followed. We have a vision, we have a mission statement, and we have goals. We must advocate for our students, and we also evaluate the chief school administrator, hold him accountable for he is the only one that we can evaluate, basically. And we must have clear communication. And I'm hoping we move to clear communication, because right now, the communication with the board, among the board members and the community is not clear at all.
Thank you. Ms. Braskam?
My opponents, Mr. La Toraca and Ms. Ricks, have made good points about what the role of a board member is, but what I didn't hear them say was anything about the children or the parents or the teachers. I believe that board members should serve as intermediaries, not just people that tell everybody in the district what to do. We serve the benefit of the community. It's our responsibility to have the district working efficiently and effectively, and it takes more than just administrators and board members to do that. So I believe the role of a board member is to function as an intermediary between parents, students, teachers, administrators, to make sure the district is running smoothly.
Thank you. And Ms. Ackerman?
Sure. So thank you for this question. You know, to build on what everyone has said, my ticket and my opponent says alike. The appropriate role of a board member, from my perspective in terms of good governance and basically the way it's laid out, is that the role of a board member is to work with your fellow board members, to manage the superintendent and to manage the budget, so you can address the needs of the school district. And in order to be successful, I think it's crucial that all board members, be you part of a majority or a minority, work together through respect, professionalism, and remember that you were elected by your fellow citizens and that you must put the needs of the students and the district before your own agendas, your own egos, or your political aspirations. And I think only through that, as well as community engagement, which is key in our platform, that's how we can move Asbury Park forward and improve our school district.
Thank you all. We turn now to the question of student success. How would you seek to improve achievement levels among students? Are there ways the curriculum can be enhanced to support higher achievement? And we'll begin with Ms. Braskam.
Okay. So success is not just generated through academics. You need social development. You need emotional development. As a tutor, I deal with that on a regular basis. Yes, my kids are struggling in areas, but a lot of times, they just want to talk. You know, they're dealing with issues in schools such as bullying or family issues, hormones, right? So we can't just push curriculum, curriculum, curriculum. Yes, that's important. But we also need to make sure that students have access to arts. They have access to sports. They're interacting with their peers. Achievement is not objective. It's subjective, right? But we have to work to make our students well-rounded, and by improving career pathways and exploring arts, sports, making sure we have that on top of the academics, we can definitely improve student achievement.
Thank you. Ms. Ricks?
Yes. At first, I think we should audit the curriculum. I think we should look at the things that we have that are working, where we could see student success, and those that are not working, we need to get rid of them. As I continue to say, we have certain curriculums that we know are working, but we keep doing the same thing year after year after year, and we keep getting the same results, where most of our kids are way below grade level. And we also know that if a child is not reading and performing on fourth grade level or by fourth grade, we are feeding the from school to prison pipeline.
Thank you. Ms. Soria Flores?
Thank you. And I'm in agreement with both ladies so far in the sense that there's got to be a balance. There's got to be a balance between obviously holding the, you know, the curriculum accountable as well, making sure, again, the same as Ms. Ricks said, you know, seeing what works, what is not working, yet not forgetting that we also, one standard doesn't work for everybody. We have a great amount of families migrating here, children coming in at different levels of their education. And so we have to make it where it's not just a standard, right? It has to adapt to each individual child, children. Some children are coming in with higher levels and some with lower, and we need to be able to address that and also provide the resources to both the teachers to be able to handle these situations and as well as support to the families, because learning doesn't just happen in school. It happens in the world around them, in the home and in the world in the neighborhoods as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. La Toraca?
Well, first, everyone needs to be in school for learning to be effective. I think that that's obvious. Prior administration addressed excessive absences, chronic lateness by staff. The people in charge of those systems have been let go, so that's a concern. Second, I agree with Ms. Braskam. You have to report to the community, and we should be doing that every month about student academic achievement. 90% of our students were not at math level. What did we do this summer? Let's report on that, and were there, was progress made? Support for ESL students, challenges caused by family poverty must be addressed by the school district. And I agree with Soria Flores. You can't say that that's not our job. We have to bring those resources to the classroom. And fourth, teachers, staff, students successfully meeting grade level and academic achievement must be celebrated, supported. They should be on our website. We should be talking about them. Thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Magsud?
I propose implementing evidence-based strategies such as high-dose tutoring, extended learning time, and increased family engagement. The research shown that these methods can significantly improve academic performance, and the government just passed two pieces of legislation for bilingual literacy and digital literacy. We want to be the first district in line to get these for our children at free and no cost for our district. One key issue is the influx of children of immigrant families. Over half of Asbury Park students speak Spanish or Creole as their first language. Many of them have just gone into this country with no formal education and any, and they have to sit in a classroom, and months later, they have to take standard tests. As an immigrant myself, when I moved to America at 17, not knowing a lick of English, and a month later, I had to take SAT. When I am re-elected, this will be my top priority to focus and address literacy at no cost to our district.
Thank you. We turn now to questions-
Sorry, Cindy, I think you forgot me.
Did I? I am sorry.
No problem. That's all right. And I believe the question was specifically geared towards how to improve the curriculum as it relates to test scores. Is that correct?
So the question was, how would you seek to improve achievement levels among students? Are there ways the curriculum can be enhanced to support higher achievement?
Great, thank you. Well, I think that I agree with everything that's been said so far, really, that one of the key issues, as I see it though, and it ties directly to some of the comments previously made, is that we don't have enough, or we have very few if any bilingual or trilingual teachers in the district. And I think that the first step in addressing the failings in our testing is to work directly with the teachers to determine what their needs are in order to be able to teach children who speak a different language. And I think that's a big piece of it. And the second piece of it, I think, ties back again to our platform, which is we need to engage the community. We need to have direct lines of communication with the teachers. I would advocate for bringing back some of our liaison programs and finding a way to make the parents feel like there is an open door that they can walk into and have their questions answered, not just present those questions without answer from the board, but be able to have a dialogue about it. And I think that's key to improving learning in the district.
Thank you. Has everyone spoken? Thank you. And we'll turn now to the budget. The Asbury Park School District has an annual budget of approximately $56 million. What is your experience and expertise in working with large budgets? And we will begin with Dr. Magsud.
We need to advocate for more state funding and resources to attack the literacy gap between rich and poor school district. The governor just signed a package of bills that will provide direct resources to school districts. So why not grabbing on those, including, as I mentioned, bilingual learning? These are hundreds of thousands of dollars that could directly impact Asbury Park students at no cost to local taxpayer. We need school board members who will advocate for our student in Trenton. Mr. La Toraca was on board for seven years as a Chair of Finance Committee, and nothing was done, asking for more money from the government.
Thank you. Ms. Braskam?
I just want to clarify, the question was my experience with large budgets?
Yes. What is your experience or expertise in working with large budgets?
So I'm a firm believer in it doesn't matter how much money you have, you need to be financially responsible. As a board member for Asbury Park Little League, we deal with our budget, probably not as large as the school district budget, but we have a sizable amount of money that we deal with. We have to make sure that we have all the resources we need as far as equipment. We're taking care of any fees as far as facilities we're using, charter payments- As far as facilities we're using, um, charter payments and all those types of things, ordering uniforms, so. We have done that and we have grown our program. We've been able to have a surplus. And we keep fundraising coming in to make sure that our funds still exist, so. I believe that experience can be utilized as well on the board.
Thank you. Ms. Ackerman?
Thank you. Um, so first, my experience in nonprofits involve managing a multimillion-dollar budget. Uh, working directly with our executive director, as well as the management of grants that ranged from hundreds of thousands of dollars to millions of dollars. Uh, second, my experience includes more than a decade of working daily as an attorney with forensic accountants. To trace funds and build our case to recover billions from recipients. So therefore, my skills and experience, I think, make me uniquely qualified to serve on the board and handle not only a large budget. But also the large complex matters that come along with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lotaraka?
Well, uh, similar to Ms. Ackerman, I've actually had the experience managing. Large budgets in the public sector as both a vice president of academic affairs. At two different community colleges, making the determinations of where money should go. For it to be most effective and efficient. Analyzing the performance of departments and making determinations of if a department needs to be increased. Because of its performance or or decreased. Currently, for twenty twenty-three, the per student cost in Asbury Park. Is thirty-seven thousand one hundred and ninety-two dollars per student. Uh, I I guess Dr. Matzud wants that higher. I I'm not seeing money as the issue right now. I would also cap local property taxes at two percent. Until we see some kind of performance through analysis.
Thank you. Ms. Rex?
Respond to um, any of the.
Um, there is no uh, provision in the guidelines for responses.
Uh, Ms. Rex?
Uh, yes, my experience in budgeting is that I was a. Housing Authority Commissioner for the city of Asbury Park for us for seventeen years. We had a very large budget. We made sure that the residents benefited. From that budget as I served as president at one point and vice president. And during my tenure on the Board of Ed, one of my complaints have been. That the kids are only getting the trickle-down effect. They are not getting the full effect of that. Thirty-seven thousand dollars per student. We have no extracurricular activities. If we do, they are very few and far in between. No summer school for the majority of our kids, only from uh, preschool through kindergarten. So I would like to see the money invested in educating the children, not just trickle down to them. More programs, more things that will benefit the kids directly.
Thank you. And Ms. Soraya Flores?
Well, um, to be honest, I don't have much of a background on managing big budgets like that. I am a very um, dedicated person and in the sense that. You know, if you give me an assignment, I will learn it and I will try to focus and learn as much as I can. Um, yet, you know, unfortunately, having a background in budgeting doesn't always mean that you're gonna make the best choices. I mean, uh, Mr. Lotaraka was part of the, was chair of finances for years back. And there were grave mistakes made regarding the budget. Um, you know, Ms. Rex was also part of the, is current part of the Board of Ed Education. And again, we can have all the experiences you want, but when it comes to making choices, sometimes we're not as efficient. So my background might not be a big background. Uh, yet I'm willing to do and make sure that I am held accountable and participate in all that is needed. In order for me to grow within a role of board member, especially when it comes to finances and budget.
Thank you. We'll now turn to a series of questions, um, looking at the diversity of the community. As well as the diversity of the student body. Our first question, how would you foster inclusiveness and unity among Asbury Park's diverse communities? As it relates to support of its schools and its students? You'll begin with Ms. Ackerman.
Thank you. I think that the the first key to inclusive inclusivity is um. Reaching out and speaking with the different communities. Um, learning what issues face each of our different communities, each individual in fact. Um, because without representation, there there can be no, it feel, people do not feel included. Um, and unfortunately, right now and for the past several years at least, um, although I think more more recently. What I'm hearing is that the parents in in the various communities, in in all different walks of life within Asbury. Feel as though they have been completely shut out of their, of their children's education. And they have no recourse to raise issues about special education and other issues. I'm glad that my opponents who are parents feel empowered because they have the ability to talk with the superintendent and others. But unfortunately, until we get to the point where we create actual pathways. To include our students and our teachers in these conversations, I don't know that we can get there. And so I think that's the first step.
Thank you. Ms. Soraya Flores?
Thank you. I do agree with Ms. Ackerman, um, that we need to make sure that we have those connections. Yet representation has been lacking significantly. We are a group of three minority women. Again, my first language is Spanish. I would be able to directly communicate with the families. I wish I learned Haitian Creole, but I haven't had this opportunity. But we need to make sure that we find the ways to connect. I have vast experience in working in the community. I've been able to connect with families on a one-to-one level. I have worked in my parish and in not only through uh, volunteer work, but also through work, regular work. And have those connections and hope to bring that um, ability to be able to have that. Um, those conversations that, like again, Ms. Ackerman was definitely right. We need to include them as well as the teachers. Yet we need to have the proper pre- representation for parents to feel that they can come and approach us.
Thank you. Ms. Rex?
Yes, the one thing I love most about Asbury Park is its diversity. Working for the school district as a parent liaison or in the coordinator of the parent re- uh, liaison. We embrace parents from all walks of life. As a matter of fact. Spanish-speaking and Haitian Creole-speaking uh, parents who came to our meeting, they had. An instrument whether they could listen to and understand what we were saying. Because it would be translated into their language. Again, I love the diversity of this beautiful city of Asbury Park. We try to en- embrace people from all walks of life. The the last thing I wanna say, that question uh, speaks to our platform, cuz that's part of our platform. Um, in the improvement learning now.
Thank you. Ms. Braskam?
Um, I think everyone so far has said a lot of great things. Our, our town is diverse, but if you look at our schools, majority of our students are black and brown. And our board does not reflect that at all. Um, you know. How does a parent from the west side feel when majority of the board is Caucasian? You know, or higher income, they they might not feel that they can relate. So I think it's important that our board reflects. Our town, our students, and everyone that's involved. But right now, that's, that's not even. And a reality, so my ticket, we're again, all minority. So we are true representation of our school.
Thank you. Dr. Maxune?
Yeah, I aim to establish a strong rela- relationship with the community, parents and educator. And I have the privilege, I was already able to do that since my son has been in the system since October. I value, I am there at every drop-off and most pickups. And we listen to each other. I value the parents' input and feedback to better comprehend our community and concern and priorities. I attend to every PTO meeting and unfortunately, because of lack of diversity. And the fact that the previous administrator wanted to have no communication with parent-teacher conferences. We lost that relationship. Now we are rebuilding. Now we have connections with them. They are coming. We have translators. This is my main priority to bring the kids what they need, for them to be heard.
Thank you. And Mr. Lotaraka?
Yeah, I agree with the number of things that have been said so so far, including the areas improvement where you have to look at your staff. And determine whether they fit the model of what you need in terms of bilingual skills. But we also have to go beyond just calling parents. In what educators might think is a traditional sense of a back-to-school night, which. Uh, i- in my years, I I never saw a uh, a a large turnout. We have to go to the parents themselves and particularly with a lot of parents, we have to sit down and say, how can we help? Learning is beyond the student. Learning involves the family and family issues. Sometimes uh, poverty-related challenges are critical. And I think we need to come together, organize our nonprofits, determine what we can do as individuals in a school district. To help parents at that individual level.
Thank you. On a related note, Asbury Park is a community with below-average median income. And this brings many issues of its own. How would you attempt to overcome these issues as it relates to the schools? Uh, Mr. Lotaraka?
Uh, I think I, I I may have answered uh, half of that. The the school district cannot. Cannot sit there, we cannot have staff members say, it's not my job. If I gave homework and the child took it home and the parents don't speak English and the child's falling behind. We need to go in and truly evaluate. All staff, all personnel, making that connection at the classroom level. And determining what does not only this student need. But maybe what the student's family needs in in order to help. We, if we get back to running Saturday classes, what could we offer for the parents that might assist? While the student is getting those additional tutoring uh, academic hours. It's those kinds of things that we have to broaden and the workforce has to realize broadens. The job requirements.
Thank you. Ms. Ackerman?
Sure, so I think it's um, I think I would approach this from um, to kind of two angles. The first is, and and it's one of the things that's near and dear to me, is determining how we're spending that. Approximately fifty-six million dollars every year on around thirteen hundred students. Um, and because, you know, we're dealing with a community that 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 is almost, I think, nearly, last that I knew. Nearly half of Asbury is at or below the poverty level. We can't budget our school district as though we're a wealthy community, even though we have that fifty-eight million dollars. So we need to take a hard look at how those, that money's being spent, bu- both from the curriculum side and the social side and figure out if we can re. Redirect funds to allow to, in a way to alleviate some of those issues like food insecurities. The second thing is, Asbury is an amazing city that has probably more of. More community organizations that are willing to dedicate and donate their time, energy and money to the, to the children in this city. Than anywhere I've ever seen. And I think we need to fi- open our relationships with them and increase our community engagement with them, as well as the parents and teachers. And sorry, students. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Braskam?
Can you repeat the question again for me, please?
Yes, Asbury Park is a community with below-average median income. And this brings many issues of its own. How would you attempt to overcome these issues as it relates to the schools?
Okay, so I believe Ms. Ackerman made some good points. Um, but we also have to consider the family and life. Of these students. You know, it's easy to say, oh, well, they they didn't do their homework, but maybe they don't have a computer. Maybe their lights are not on, right? So we need to offer ways for students to have access to do this work outside of the home. Tutoring services are great, after-school programs are great because it gives students the option to succeed outside of the home. Um, the Gear Up program is another great program that's being implemented this year where they're offering college readiness. They're doing tutoring, they're making sure kids have life skills, so they get that extra support without having to worry about what their income is at home.
Thank you. Ms., uh, Dr. Maxune?
Uh, before I answer the question, I just wanted to ask Mister Lotaraka, you were there, you were there for years. Um, and these promises we keep hearing, and they never happen. There was no meeting with parents. Why should we believe you again? And I'd like to also mention that we had the back-to-school night on Monday and we had music, we had excitement. We were able to go to classroom of our children that we've never seen, see them interacting with their children. It was the most exciting night I could have with my husband and my son in his classroom, including all his teachers. So I think it's so valuable to have this event as a parent, as a physician, as a member of this community. We all have to be involved in this district. It's not just the board or one parent. I communicated with the parents and asked them to come to PTO and told them that we will have the translators for you guys. Don't be worried about your immigration status. Don't be worried about anything else. Just come, ask us questions and connect with us.
Thank you. Ms. Soraya Flores?
Thank you. Um, so it's funny when it was talked about back-to-school night and how, you know. There was not a lot of presence of parents. And I can honestly say, in my own personal experience, when it came to high school. There was hardly any parents present in, you know, and and this was, you know, five, six years ago. So unfortunately, that happens and I don't think it's just unique to our district yet. I do believe that there are a lot of organizations within our community in Asbury Park, a lot of nonprofit, like it's been said. Yet they're not communicating. Everybody's doing their own things. Everybody's doing their own little programs that you see the same kids attending. We need to make sure that as a board, we are emphasizing and making it a priority to have the communication with all the agencies. So that all those great programs that are happening are not just um, being seen by the same students and the same families. But making sure that all the families are aware of the importance that these programs that unfortunately are not going to be able to receive through the district. They're getting it from an outside because that's what's going to help the student achieve success as well.
Thank you. And Ms. Rex?
Uh, yes, I think one of the most important things that we can do is embrace parent. True parent participation. Make parents feel comfortable when they walk into the school system. Make parents feel comfortable when they have to have dialogue with their children, teacher. We have a certain amount of money set aside in Title I for parental involvement. It's time for us to start using that money where we can foster and enhance parental. Engagement. Right now, we don't have that. If the parents show up with some questions, they are pretty much ostracized. So I'd like to see parents welcome, as we did some years ago. Parents were actually welcome. We had training and parent program at the Dorothy L. Magnus Parent Center. We still have a section of Title I for that.
Thank you very much. Um, and next, how do you think the district is doing with regard to special education issues? Where do you see room for improvement? We'll begin with Ms. Soraya Flores.
I don't have much experience with the special education besides what I have heard from um, my running mate, Ms. Dr. Matzud, who has ex- had such a wonderful experience. Um, I know that there's always room for improvement and. And from what I've heard from some of the parents themselves as well, they're very um happy with what's going on. Obviously, again, there's always room for improvement and obviously look to seek to new programs. Um, specialized um teachers, making sure that we keep them in our district, right? And not only here for a small brief time and then you know, transfer off to another district. So we need to make sure that we are advocating for them as well. In order to be able to provide those services to the children of Asbury Park so that they don't have to be sent off to other school districts to receive that great uh support services.
Thank you. Dr. Mark Soon.
As a parent with the IEP child in our district, I strongly believe that our district and Board of Education should ensure adequate support and resources for students with disabilities. I personally experienced this um under the previous administration when they denied my child's services. And unfortunately, once they found out that I am an advocate mom, a physician. And will fight for my kid to get his right. Fifteen minutes later, I was called that he's approved. And there is no need for any evaluation. Instead of being happy for that phone call, I was heartbroken because I knew that they are doing this to so many other kids that don't have the parents' uh skills that I did. And I was devastated. So things has moving forward for those children and those parents. The new administrator 's priority is their kids. And I have been so happy with what I have seen in the process of my child.
Thank you. Mr. Lataraka.
Well, we do have a significant number of special ed children and uh I saw where the current administration may want to make some changes and and bring some services in-house. I don't have all the facts to really completely respond to that. How I how I would respond, whether it's special education or again, whether I feel it's the primary uh issue that if we don't solve, all our children fail, is the performance of those providing the teaching and learning for students at the math and English level. Same thing applies to special ed. Do we have individuals who are at the high level necessary to do their jobs or are they giving incorrect information to mothers who then have to be stronger advocates to get what they want? Do we have those systems in place to take Asbury Park to the next level? Terms of performance. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rix.
Uh, yes, we have a large special special need uh population. And the larger the special need population is, the more money the district gets for that. I have heard parents complain that their special needs student isn't getting all that they need. They are not, the IEPs are not updated as regularly as they should be. I just heard this is one of our meeting greets uh this past week. We have the ability to educate all of our kids, whether they have special needs or not. Right now, we have a contracted supervisor over the special needs department. My question is why can't we have a supervisor who's consistent, who can monitor what is happening in our special needs uh population? And that includes, as I said, the life skills program.
Thank you. Ms. Braskum.
Um, so Mr. Lataraka and Ms. Rix both mentioned we have a large special needs population. As an educator, that's concerning to me because why are there so many IEPs? Ms. Rix, you serve as the curriculum chair. So if anything, you have firsthand experience of what the curriculum is and should be making sure that IEPs and 504s are met. Every child is entitled to a 504, which means they can have accommodations. I personally work with a student in this district who has an IEP and is not getting the services that he needs or is required. And his mother has been advocating for him. And that's that's the responsibility of the board. The board is supposed to make sure those things are done. And it's something as simple as being in sixth grade and you cannot count to ten or add and subtract to ten. And he has an IEP. It's just disgusting to me. So.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Ackerman.
Sure, thank you. And I think I'd like to pick up on some of the things that Mom and Jessie have said because they tie again to what we're what our ticket is really about. Um, first, I'd like to go back to the fact that we only have about thirteen hundred students in the Asbury Park School System and we've got fifty eight million dollars in our budget. We are fully funded now by the city, by the citizens. And we need to understand where the funds in the budget are going. If they're not going to the early childhood development, so that at to Ms. Bascom's point, there shouldn't be so many IEPs, then we need to figure that out. And that comes back directly to the benchmarking that that we've mentioned a couple of times tonight, which is where's the money going? What programs are working? What programs are not? And let's set up some benchmarks that are that we look at on a regular basis, be a monthly or quarterly to figure out whether things are moving in the right direction or not. Because frankly, going back to what we just talked about. The sad fact of people living in poverty is that they don't have the luxury to get on the phone and make those phone calls or come to back to school night because they're working one, two or three jobs. And we need to recognize that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to move on to parental involvement. What do you think of community and parental involvement in the school district? What, if anything, would you in advocate to increase involvement? And we'll begin with Ms. Rix.
Okay, excuse me. That question brings a smile to my face, especially since I served as parent liaison and then the coordinator parent liaison where we had lots of parental involvement. As I said before, we had English speaking, we had Spanish speaking, we had Haitian Creole speaking. Because they felt comfortable, they felt welcome. We even had them come into Board of Ed meetings. And for whatever reason, the district decided to abolish the program because a person in particular wasn't feeling comfortable with uh parental involvement. So I welcomed this person. Yeah, let's embrace the parent. Let's make them feel that they are part of this, the their kids' education.
Thank you. Mr. Lataraka.
Rental and community involvement, I would probably start at revamping the whole structure of how school board meetings are run so that they're more open and there can be more of a dialogue from uh community members and parents. And we we can get community engagement to help us as we're out campaigning. Finding people, offering their their services for tutoring or or whatever, w- without even being asked. Uh, but you have to convey an openness, not say you've got three minutes to say something, then sit down and there's going to be no, no response to that. Uh, and again, with developing other systems and and advisory council uh uh of community members and 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 parents is is a possibility that you get more communication. And we can get more engagement with the talented people that we have in town here. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Mark Soon.
Yes. Once again, I don't, I can comprehend. Ms. Rix and um Mr. Lataraka, you've been on the board for total of decade. And we've heard this before and this has never happened on your watch. So what is new? What would you do next? Um, I personally would like to bring athletic and fine arts program, band theater back to Asbury Park. Asbury Park is an art mecca. However, because of state funding cuts and because it was not a priority in previous administrator and boards, the art were cut and eventually disappeared. No plays, no drama club, no band, no vocal training, no dance, no jazz. That's when parents and kids come together. That's where they create their community. And we don't have any of that in Asbury Park. Whereas there are so many artists and musicians offering their services for free to us, but the previous administration, it would wanna just hear nothing about it. I personally had a meeting with the previous admin.
Sorry, we're out of time. Thank you. Um, Ms. uh Soraya Flores.
So definitely great ideas, but we need to act on it, right? Because we can all say this is what we need to do, but we need to actually act on it. Again, engage the programs that are working already, have one center, one hub where we can all find it and actually be involved. Bring the families in, show them that we care as a district, as a board, right? I welcome that of of having board uh families come to the board. Yet if you know certain cultures, they're not going to approach that. There's a mentality, unfortunately, that they don't have that right. So we need to get into the communities to teach them about that rights. As one of my daughter's friends said to me, um, not so long ago about her, uh, when she went to school at Asbury Park, she said she stopped caring because she realized that people around her stopped caring. And so we need to show that we care for the families, that we are there for them and the students to support them and find new and productive and actually work on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ackerman.
Yes, thank you. So I I want to pick up on what Ms. Soraya Flores said. Let's act on it. And to go back to Dr. Mark Soon's point, there was a program in place. Ms. Rix served as a parent liaison. There is an existing McNish Parent Center. It is there. The pu- we don't have to reinvent the wheel here. We just need to go back to a program that is proven to have worked. A program that's been disbanded clearly since Ms. Rix was in that role. I doubt that she voted for that. It's happened in the past several years when, if we're gonna point things out about who's been on the board the past six years, the current board majority has been on the board. Much of that that majority has been on the board for several, several years. And so I think what we need to recognize here is we had a program in place. We can easily go back to it. And in terms of bringing the arts into the the school district, I have met with so many people over the past six months that I've been campaigning who have told me, I offered my time to the to the board. I offered my time to the school and I was declined, free of charge. So I think we need to focus on those who are offering their time again. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Braskum.
I think one of the things my opponents are not considering is the the distrust the community has in the board, right? Maybe people have served several years. You know, they've been on the board, they've been making decisions, but we cannot have community or parent involvement if the community doesn't trust the district. If they don't trust the board to get the job done, then why are they gonna waste their time? That's why um, Ms. Soraya Flores can say that the student said, I stop caring when other people stop caring. But the reality of it is, the only way we can get trust is if we have new leadership. If the same people keep doing the same things, we can't trust that they're gonna do anything different because they have shown us already that they can't do that. So in my opinion, we have to start fresh.
Thank you. Um, we'll move on to discipline. What, if anything, would you like to see improved about the district policy on discipline? How would you tackle fighting and bullying among students? And we'll begin with Mr. Lataraka.
Well, I you you know, one, it it's a requirement that we're recording it. Uh, we're reporting it out. We're doing it regularly. The reports could probably be a little bit more detailed at times in terms of uh the context. Uh, fighting i- is going to be uh unacceptable. There's going to be uh a standard of conduct that needs to be employed that seems to have varied over the years with different administrations. And um, there's consequences to that behavior. I don't necessarily agree with consequences always being suspension and then uh as a result, absolutely no academic activity going on, but rather a more intensive work of academics upon suspension when certain activities are above the line and have to be addressed. There has to be respect for other students and for the staff. And the staff don't have to put up with disrespect.
Thank you. Ms. Ackerman.
Sure, I think that I agree uh completely with what Mr. Lataraka said. I think that bullying and is is because become even more rampant with the impact of social media. And I think that to the extent the administration continues to follow our policies and procedures with the an eye to the fact that there are t- that things are changing rapidly and the impact of bullying is is um more impact is is further impacting girls than boys and approaching these things with the care and appreciation that we need. Um, that's that's vital at this point. And again, that goes to benchmarking and we would include this in any plan we had for for tracking how how the the administration and the staff and the teachers are handling these issues. Um, and that goes the same for fighting that if our policies are not giving us the results we need, improving the behavior, then I think we need to take a good look at them and can and consider whether or not they're the right policies. Um, and again, that's part of benchmarking.
Thank you. Ms. Braskum.
Fighting and bullying is not specific to Asbury Park. Let's be honest with that. But we also have to remember that an idle mind is the devil's playground. If we're not engaging our students, if we're not stimulating our students, they're going to find ways to horseplay and and mess around, right? So if we make sure we have things in place such as um an effective curriculum and we make sure we have our extracurriculars, they're gonna be so busy worrying about things that are going to help them, not hurt them. They're not gonna have time to fight.
Thank you. Dr. Mark Soon.
As my teammate, uh, Ms. Braskum has mentioned, bullying is among children as well as adults. We see it on a daily basis, especially these day near the voting. Um, unfortunately, number one reason of it is our egos um as adults and teaching our children the same thing. And they will repeat that in classroom. If they are hurt and if it's the first priority of our educators to hear them instead of putting them at the corner or taking them out of the class or taking them out of the school, then we would be in a much better place. And we are in much better place. I would have not sent my child to a classroom that bullying was in an even an option. There's nothing but kindness among them. Teachers hear them and address them to us as parents if there is anything.
Thank you. Ms. Soraya Flores.
Um, it's a lot's been said and I agree with most of it. Discipline, unfortunately, it's such a negative aspect and such a negative word, right? Consequences is much word. Uh, it's a much appropriate word, in my opinion. Yet we have to recognize that it is not a one thing solution. You can't just do one thing, improve policies and so on. We have to tackle everything that is happening. Uh, we were able to get some funding for mental health services, something that the prime administration did not um make it a priority. And mental health is isn't much needed. We need to have the resources for the teachers to be able to tackle these issues. Because we have, we know that a child coming in with some kind of mental health issue or some kind of um neglect or anything going on in the home is not going to be able to focus and learn. So we need to have the resources available for not only the children, but the teachers and the families. That's the only way we're gonna be able to tackle bullying and consequences to these actions.
Thank you. Um, and Ms. Rix.
Uh, yes, uh, first I want to address Dr. Monsoon, Mrs. Bascom and Mrs. uh Flores. Your own campaign manager has been on the district uh on the Board of Ed for over eight years. Your own campaign manager has been on the district, uh, on the Board of Ed for over eight years. So perhaps you need to talk to him also. Now, in terms of bullying and harassment, we have policies and regulations for that. Even last year, we had a principal at the high school. Where bullying and intimidation was at its lowest. And that principal was non-renewed. So we talk a good game and we pretend we are doing things. That we are not doing. We pretend we are following certain rules and regulation that we are not doing, even as a board member. I sit here right now and feel, feel bullied, uh, bullied at our board meeting.
Thank you all. Okay, we have time for one last question. Um, and I would like to know what, um, is there an important issue that hasn't been addressed so far in this forum? And we will begin with Ms. Ricks.
I, yes, I feel that we've covered a lot of things, but I think we need to speak the truth. I think we need to stick to the issues, not cut, uh, attack. Not attack, stick to the issues. Our ticket tonight, we have not attacked anybody. But we found a couple of times when they were speaking untrue, that we had to speak up and defend ourselves. And that's all I'm saying. It's about the fact, it's about the kids, it's about educating these kids. It's not about attacking what has done and what has not been done. It's about what we're gonna do now to raise the educational standards for our children. That's my focus. I don't walk around attacking folks or trying to find the wrong that you done. I look for the good and hope that we could work as a team to build the kids. Because Asbury Park, w- w- we have to re- raise up. We have to raise our kids up to be the best they can be.
Thank you. Mr. Lataraka.
I would just point out, um, as you try to bring a board together and make it more effective. Uh, you look at experience and in doing that, I think all six members here can bring. Components of experience that, that can assist both the board, they can assist the district in a number of ways. But I would say to the voters, sit back and in a comprehensive fashion. Who has the deepest and broadest level of dealing with issues? That, uh, have not been completely resolved. In over twenty-five years in the Asbury Park School District. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Magsud.
Ms. Ricks, with all due respect, these are not personal attacks. This is for the children. And our campaign manager, Joe Grillo, is not running for reelection. You and Mr. Lataraka are running. So these attacks that you're calling are just my personal opinion as previous board members. I think everything was addressed, uh, fairly tonight. And I thank you for creating this platform for us to be able to answer questions and, uh, be heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Soraya Flores.
I'm, the only thing I, I would address is the fact that I do agree with, uh, Mr. Lataraka. That, you know, all six participants here bring in different wealth of knowledges. Yet in the past, it's always been sort of like the same components of members, right? And in my mind, as we, uh, as this weekend, as, as we were walking, canvassing. We met a gentleman who said, you know, to his experience, Board of Education was made up by parents. Right? Parents, people who had direct contact with the children, who knew exactly what was happening in those schools. To be able to bring that back to the board, to the administration and have real-time conversations, think of solutions. And I think that's what we need, uh, moving forward. We need to, you know, we've done so many things in the past that haven't worked, let's try something different.
Thank you. Ms. Ackerman.
Sure, I think that what I would like to raise is that. To Ms. Soraya Flores's point, yes, let's try to do things differently. And let's try to do things differently than is what's been done in the past few years. Frankly, part of the reason I'm sitting here today is because my taxes went up by fifty percent in two years. To cover the shortfall that was caused by S2. A shortfall that the board was well aware of when Mr. Lataraka was on the board, which is why he put together a five-year plan. To lessen the impact on Asbury Park citizens to cover that shortfall. I am one hundred and ten percent behind fully funding education in Asbury Park. Because I truly believe without an educational system, without a di- school district, we will lose our community. And we will lose a lot of multigenerational families who can no longer afford to be here. And so for that, I don't know that you need to be a parent to be qualified to manage a fifty-eight million dollar budget. Figure out what's going wrong in this school district and come up with smart, sophisticated answers to these very, very complicated problems. And so that's why I'm running and that's what we tried, we have done, we've put together a plan and we'd like to implement it. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Brasko.
I think Ms. Ackerman some, said something that we should all take a moment to reflect on. She said within the last two years, her taxes increased. So would you be running if your taxes didn't increase? Would you be invested in this district? If you didn't have a tax increase, because I have a personal investment in this district, which is my twelve-year-old son. And his future is important to me. I have been actively involved his whole life in his education, but not just my child, every child that I come and contacted. The other day, we had a meet and greet, former high school students, what's your plan when you finish at Brookdale? Because their success is a part of my story as well as a community member. It takes a village. So first and foremost, yes, it's about the children, but we can't just consider taxpayers having to pay more money. It's more than that.
Thank you. All right, um, we're out of time for questions, so we're going to move on to our closing statements. Um, and again, that order was predetermined by drawing from a hat. Uh, Mr. Lataraka.
Hey, thank you again for the opportunity. Uh, the district's extremely poor student academic test scores have resulted in shrinking enrollments. Severe damage to our children's futures due to a lack of learning. We have to get everybody working harder with quarterly learning benchmarks to achieve and regular updates to the community. Engaging the community more, increasing academic hours, tutoring, bilingual education. And help overcome the challenges of poverty. As I sat here tonight though, what I, what I rewrote in this, i- in this final statement. Is what I heard from, uh, the opposing ticket. They argue for change and it reminds me the reason why I ran. By February, anyone who had come to the district, almost everyone in a leadership capacity was let go. The change they want is now based on the individuals who have been there, on average, twenty years. And I think it's going to be very difficult to bring about the nice changes they talk about with that work staff.
Thank you. Ms. Brasko.
To sort of pick up on where Mr. Lataraka left off. Yes, a lot of people were let go. But with the new acting superintendent, the teachers are happy, the parents are happy, the students are happy. I know that for a fact because I back to school last night, back to school night last night. The teachers were expressing how they have this belief. It was just this sigh of, okay, finally, we can get something done. And with the previous administration, we couldn't do that. But the support Asbury Children's ticket is the team that is supporting the current superintendent. So we can't go back to the old administration because we're gonna get the same results. And in order for us to move forward, we have to look at new ideas, new plans, new people. And quite frankly, my ticket is all new, so the choice is clear.
Thank you. Ms. Ackerman.
Sure, um. I believe that the Asbury Park Schools, School Board needs a plan. And a vision to improve the school district, not just for the children of the board members, but for all thirteen hundred students in Asbury Park. And that plan needs to address the unique issues facing the school district today. Said it before, we've got nearly fifty-six million dollars available in, in, in money and budget. But for thirteen hundred students, they should be getting the best education in all of New Jersey. And I am a huge proponent of education. I care about the children and that's why I'm here. Um, we, despite the, the resources, we, we ranked dead last last year. And we have a plan for better and transparent board governance that includes mutual respect among all board members. Fiscal responsibility that directs the resources to the students and not to the top-heavy administration or the consultants. So we can control the costs for everyone in town. Ultimately, we need to take politics out of education in Asbury Park and bring new ideas and the necessary skills to improve learning now. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ricks.
Uh, yes, I am a strong advocate for Asbury Park. Being a strong advocate, I advocate for the parents. I advocate for the children especially and the community. That is basically my closing remark. And then I want to thank the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this program, the SEO C. And the Asbury Park Reporter for covering. And I'll ask anyone who's, everyone who's listening. If you thought you heard something from us that you could get behind. I'm asking you to support Ackerman, Stephanie Ackerman, Dominic Lataraka. And myself, we are running on the improved learning now ticket. Thank everyone involved for making this a success.
Thank you. Dr. Magsud.
Asbury Park School District doesn't need a plan, it needs action. It's easy to say you've been an advocate, Ms. Ricks, but you have not attended a single committee meeting in almost ten months. And I personally asked you to attend and you said, I will not. As you've seen, the choice for school board couldn't be any clearer. The whole point is that one ticket is about ideas and plans, and they had the time to prove it. And the other is about action. And don't take my word for it, look at your tax bill, look at your increased rent, look at your state low test score. It makes no sense that the failed literacy program got approved repeatedly. That is the legacy of Mr. Lataraka as a Chair of Finance Committee and Ms. Ricks as a Chair of Curriculum Committee. Together, accumulatively for ten years as a Board of Ed member, and now they are asking for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Soraya Flores.
Well, again, thank you for this wonderful night. I think I am the least political person on the board here. Yet my, my trust forward in this election. Um, is that people are gonna choose who they see are going to work hard. In order to get the scores high, talk to the families, bring in a different type of plans. Okay, we might not have something set on stone, yet we have the heart for it. I also want to make sure, because I've heard a lot about accountability. Want to make sure that we as board members are also held accountable for our actions. We are elected into this official role. And with that, we need to make sure that we are attending meetings, that we are up to date on budgets. So that things may go through smoothly and not have to be reiterated or re-brought back. Because of lack of attendance or lack of actually following through on what needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you again very much to all of our candidates for participating tonight. This has been very informative. Thank you too to our audience for taking this time to inform yourselves about the candidates. This forum has been recorded. The recording will be posted to our league website, LWV Monmouth.org. As well as on Vote 411, the League Voter Guide. This record may be shared only in its entirety. The use of excerpts from the recording is not permitted. Candidates, please feel free to wave goodbye to the audience now. Audience, please remain with us briefly as I share information regarding voting in the upcoming election. The registration deadline for voting, for, for voting is October fifteenth. Um, and there are three ways for you to, for registered voters to vote. First, by mail, to request a mail-in, a mail-in ballot, please follow the instructions on votenewjersey.gov. That's votenj.gov. Cast your ballot by mailing it or by placing it in any drop box in your county, presumably Monmouth. Or by hand delivering it to the Board of Elections in your county. You may also vote via early in-person voting. Use a voting machine at early, at any early voting site in your county during the nine period. Nine-day period from Saturday, October twenty-sixth through Sunday, November third. And finally, you may vote in person on Election Day. There, you must cast your ballot using a voting machine at your assigned local polling site between six in the morning and eight at night. For any voting questions, please visit votenj.gov. Thank you once again for joining us and we wish you a good night.